I'd like to call this meeting to order. We need to establish a quorum, and we do have a quorum present. Director Menley, Director Gaines, myself, Director Robinson, Director Schott, and Director Palmer. Director Ward and Director Bland are not here at the moment. Everyone, please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance, flag, United States of America, and to the republic which is in us. One nation, under God, in visible liberties and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay. Public comment. I've got one at the moment. I don't know if anybody else has signed up, Ms. Morris?
I got one.
Just fill it out and send it up here. We'll get you in line.
Hello. Board members and everyone else. I am here to present a petition of Kenny County citizens who are in favor of the adoption of Rule 4.04, a mandate of monthly reporting on meter readings. And there is also an online petition that I thought someone else was going to be bringing in. This one has got about thirty signatures. It includes the members of the court board and the court manager. And having been following the questions about rule changes, as you know, for quite some time and having so far with this committee, you know, I'm very aware that Jim Burton and Dr. Hutchison have repeatedly told us in your meetings that monthly reporting will benefit the science. And I know that we've all said for quite some time that we really want the science to drive our men to drive the decisions of the board. And so I just want to give this to you and say that we hope that you will enact that rule. And I know that there was discussion when we I was moved out of town last month, but the month before, about flexibility in the way in which it's reported to try to create too much of a burden on landowners as far as like being able to like call it in and ask Marty for help to use the act various ways of reporting it. But I hope that you all would choose to adopt that rule, and I guess I will give that to you. Wes, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Long?
All right. You guys got agenda item number seven, purchase of trust lots from CAD by Chad Potts. We have submitted a bid, but we have been told that that bid will not be distributed to anyone until his bid has been denied or has been denied. So I have a letter of intent stating that we have put in a bid for eighteen thousand dollars and that we fully intend to purchase those lots or get into some bidding opportunities with whatever happens if his bid is denied and our bid is in and he puts another one. I guess who wants to like to see what happens with that? And so I respectfully ask that you guys deny his bid and opportunity for more bids to be considered. Not really sure how it's in the best interest of the taxing entities to not be informed of additional bids, but I'm not a property tax lawyer. I don't make the rules. But, you know, if I walked in there and bid forty grand tomorrow or yesterday, you guys didn't know about it, you accept that fifteen thousand dollar offer and tax revenue lost. So I ask you guys to consider. I know we had an opportunity to get those before. You know, people don't always do things when they're supposed to, and we certainly want to do it now. Thank you.
And let the record reflect, Director Bland has arrived and is currently here. Next item of business, discussion possible action approval minutes. February twenty twenty five, regular meeting and public hearing of February twelve, twenty twenty five. I guess that should have February twelve. And I missed that one. Everyone did the agenda. By the way, I've already reviewed these and I'm going to accept them.
Second. Second.
May it motions been made and seconded to prove the minutes. All those in favor, any discussion? Any corrections, additions? All those in favor raise your hand. All those folks in town. Motion carries for now. General Manager report. Ms. Hodge, if you would be.
Okay. This last week, I think I reported the last meeting that we were, wanted to be having a state audit. And they arrived this past Monday, a week ago, about eight fifteen. There were six of them, and they were here till about, I guess, three thirty or four o'clock or so on Friday afternoon. So it was a, it was a good week. They enjoyed meeting them. They brought out some good points. I used to, I mean, they pretty much went through everything with fine tooth comb, which is what they're supposed to do. And they kept, you know, stressing to us that they are here to help, not to hurt, not to criticize, but to just, you know, help the district, which is if the auditors do point out things that maybe need to be adjusted, corrected, or if we're doing a good job. Some of the things they went over was, of course, policies and procedures. Forming statements and oath for the directors, budgets, permits, the revenue versus expenses. Touched on professional services, open reports, copies of, looking at the actual permits. The one action they went through, I guess, pretty much all the monthly reports on the the testing permits, but on the testing permits, but our regular reports too. They pretty much went through everything. Carefully reviewed our tax revenue, even went to the appraisal district to be visited with them. They, signature cards for the bank, they went over to the bank to ensure that what the copies that we had were exactly what the bank had on file from the previous five years that the audit ran. They had sent, prior to the time them writing here, they had sent numerous emails requesting information. We sent that after they got here. Each one kind of had their own section of things that they were looking at. And so we went over all that. They actually wanted some of the stuff we had sent copies of. They actually wanted to see the actual document, which, you know, was fine. They were all very pleasant, easy to work with. They didn't push us or pressure us or anything. But it was, it was a kind of, kind of an interesting and somewhat pleasant week. Once they get back to their office, they will go through everything. We've already had a couple of things that they've come back and had a needed clarification on. But once they get back to their office, they'll prepare like an additional, not an additional, but I guess a draft of what they have. Then that goes to, goes to a higher level, to their supervisors or whatever. They take a look at it. If there's something they have a question about, they kick it back to the auditors that were here. Ultimately, and then if there's something they found that we don't agree with or there's something they, some statement or whatever, we have like ten working days to respond back to that. Ultimately, it goes, finally goes to the state auditor and for their stamp of approval. And I'd say it would probably be sometime first of May, mid-May before we have the final report back. So. What's that? Let's see. We had no exempt well applications this past month. We haven't in several months. Just haven't, haven't had any. Marty continues to. Marty continues to inspect the most of the wells on a monthly basis, which includes the recording, the meter reading, photos of the meters. Okay, I'm working on the database for Jim. The region J meeting met February twenty sixth in Carville. The next meeting will be in sometime in late April. GMA seven had a meeting in Fort Stockton back last month, I believe on the twenty sixth. It was a joint meeting between GMA seven and GMA three, which abut each other. GMA ten will meet the next time on March the seventeenth, which will be this coming Monday. As far as legislative updates, there's been, of course, a number of water bills that have been filed. This coming Friday is the deadline for any senator representative to file a bill with the legislature. Just a few of the ones that related to groundwater districts is one pertains to relating to the award attorney, attorney fees and cost in certain suits involving a groundwater district. Another one was related to criteria considered by groundwater districts before granting or denying a permit or amendment. Another one relating to issues of groundwater permits to certain aliens or foreign entities. Joint planning of desired future conditions. Review of the duties of a groundwater conservation district by Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. There's just a number of these, and I'll be glad, and there'll be more coming in this week. Now, tag through the legislative committee, allows groundwater districts, so the legislative committee. As these come about, they, the committee reviews them and then they send out kind of a questionnaire. Everybody responds to that and whatever the sense consensus says that they approve this or they don't know, which is the reasons why, and if it's over and approval. That depends on what the outcome is from the committee. Then they take that and maybe meet with the, with the committee, whether it be the Ag and Resource Committee or one of those committees on it. So that's all I have. If anybody wants a copy of this, I'll be glad to provide it. And next, next month, I'll have an additional report.
Yeah, I'd like a copy if I could, please.
Sure.
And I do have a question about those bills. You know, I know that the board approved Greg Ellis's fees for lobbying in our interest. Has he expressed his opinion on any or all of those? Or are we gonna talk about what we think about this package and then tell Mr. Ellis what we would like him to do?
You can. I mean, you're.
So, well, I would like to personally, and I don't know what y'all weigh in, but I know we paid him sixty thousand dollars and to represent our interests.
Yes, sir.
So I'd like to know where we need to figure out what our interests are and then make sure Greg knows them. Or Greg, it can go the other way. Greg can tell us what he thinks our interest should be, and then we could agree to what those are or not. But I think if we're gonna spend sixty thousand dollars, we ought to know what he's gonna do and what we might direct him to do.
And I know he's, as a matter of fact, I was talking with him yesterday, and he mentioned one that most of the groundwater districts or a lot of the smaller districts are not particularly in, in favor of. Well, hey, then he didn't particularly think it was, was good either. But yeah, we can, I can get something and have it at the next meeting or prior to.
We could just solicit his.
Yes.
You know, I mean, just like any contractor, you want to know what the contractor is doing. I mean, we know what he does to represent us as a lawyer, but it's a totally separate, you know, job to represent us as a lobbyist. So we need to, you know, I'm not saying we need a, you know, summary of everything, but we need something.
Well, I think the point is valid. If you have a lobbyist, then you need to tell him what you want him to lobby for.
Up to now, we haven't. So we need to.
I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you. If you're gonna have a lobbyist, you need to tell him what you want him to lobby for or against. The case may be. So maybe the best thing to do would be to review the packet and have a workshop and us decide as a governmental body, what we want him to support or oppose.
Yes.
And then we'll make a decision and we'll have him do that.
Or.
I'd like to be, for sixty thousand dollars, I'd like the man to be at one of our meetings where we can find out what he's got on and what we need to tell him in person.
Well, we actually, we actually need to discuss that. And it's, it's gonna come up when we get down to committees, but you know, we've, we've got, we got bylaws that say we meet on one day, and we got rules that say we meet on another. We're not taking into consideration the guy that's gotta travel the farthest to get here when we set them. So, you know, it, it, it all needs to be considered, and I agree with you. We need to have our counsel here, and we need to have a counsel here. And we probably need to set a meeting date that works within his schedule because he represents, I think about what, half a dozen different districts.
That would be great.
So we kind of, we kind of gotta look at a couple of meetings, you know, to try and figure out. And then look at travel time, maybe the time, but I think. Well, I think we need to, I think that we probably need to look real hard at that, and we certainly need to tell him what we want him to lobby for or against during this legislative session. Because otherwise, we just spending money with no direction, and that's not, that's not wise.
But I'll get copies out to everybody. Now, after, after Friday, there will be some additional. These are not like, this is just ones that relate to, to groundwater, not the whole. That's just a fraction of all the bills that have been filed.
Well, and they will contribute, I don't know what the deadline is. I haven't gotten, I haven't gotten into them to see what we have. I know there's a couple out there. I've seen through some tag information, but.
The deadline to files is coming Friday.
Okay, so we'll be overbuck. Okay. All right. So at that time, then we won't get anything new, anyway.
I would like after Friday, maybe we can contact Greg because some of these things, the way it happened before, and this was, I'm going back eight years or something. You know, if, you know, I went to Austin with Tully Shaahan and, you know, to talk, it wasn't a groundwater bill, it's a water bill, but it was, it was adversely gonna affect Kenny County. And the sooner, if we wail our next meeting, there may be committee. It's not just groundwater, but water, but we need to know from Greg what's out there, what's been filed, what's good, what's bad. We may, we may need to go to Austin.
Right. We have to know the.
Before then.
We have, yes, I understand what you're saying. We have to know the schedule, and, and those, they're phenomenal for doing it last second, two or three days before they actually have their meeting. But I hear what you're saying. We have to be in the loop, so if we have to be there. So we're probably gonna have to have a call meeting Friday, next month's meeting, in order to discuss this and take some action on what we want him to do.
Greg will be available.
Okay, we'll work on that for next week. We'll come up with a date and we'll get it out to everybody, and we'll get in here and get it done.
Now, it may have to be during the day.
We'll, we'll work, we'll work as best we can.
Yeah, we can zoom him in. I mean, he doesn't have to travel. We, as long as we can get talked to.
Whatever, whatever makes it work. It doesn't matter to me. We definitely need to talk to him. Okay, let's move on to item number seven, discussion possible action. Kenny County appraisal list offered by Chad Potts, purchase hundred and thirty four CAD in trust, property selling trust, Fort Clark Springs undeveloped lots. Probably fifteen or twenty years ago, I used to sit on the board across the street. Laws change all the time. So I went back to do my due diligence to find out what the process is and whether or not the process has changed at all for tax sales and what we're doing. It has not. The auction occurs at the courthouse steps. If nobody bids on the property, it becomes held in trust by the taxing entities that have, that are owed taxes on it. Some of these properties have been held in trust for twenty or twenty-five years. Once they're put in trust, anyone can walk into the office across the street and ask for a list of properties held in trust by the appraisal district. They can do their due diligence, and they can make an offer on anything that they want. That offer has to be presented to the taxing entities, and they have to vote it up or down, whether they put it back on the roll. Simple as that. And that's why the appraisal district is not sending out of the offers because two entities have already taken action on it, and they can't. It's the way the process works.
I'm gonna make a motion that this, we refuse to offer.
I don't see that we can't.
And before we second that, could I weigh in on that motion?
Before or after?
I'd rather wait till before, and Wes, you could weigh in on this. If, if the motion is to reject it, just to be clear, that's equally the same as a motion to approve it that fails.
I do not see it that way. Number one, motions in the negative are a pain in the butt because of this very.
Okay, I agree.
So if it fails, it fails.
So.
It doesn't mean it passed. It doesn't mean it passed. It fails.
My opinion, and before we second Matt's motion, and Matt, you can do what you want. You can keep your motion or retract your motion. I think it would be better for the board to move to accept it and second it. And it doesn't matter whoever moved to accept this offer and whoever moves to second it, then the vote is independent of that, and the person that moves to accept it could vote not to accept it. Correct me if I'm wrong.
You can make a motion and then use this in part of your road.
Right. Okay, so, so that's what I think would be better. And then if it doesn't pass, then it's not accepted, and then it's done. So that's what I would like to see happen. In my opinion on it is we should not vote to accept that. We should vote, but we should not approve to accept this offer, in my opinion, knowing what we've been told by the leadership of the board, not only by the general manager, but by one of the directors. And the fact that Mr. Potts has never been here to explain his opinion on it, I think that weighs in on the situation too. It's not legally binding. I know he doesn't have to. But, you know, if he really was concerned about us approving it, I would like to see him make his pitch. So, so that's my opinion. And I think the better way to handle it would be solicit a motion to accept it.
I, I agree. A motion affirmative, whether it's floated up or down, it's much easier to interpret, and that's why I prefer them, and that's why I'm making that way.
Well, I would ask Matt to retract the motion.
But I'm gonna tell you how I feel about it. These properties have been held in trust, some of them for twenty or twenty-five years, some of them for only a year. At any point, anyone could have walked into that tax office and paid the back taxes and put a tax lien against that property and wound up within six months.
I understand.
There's no excuse twenty-five years down the road that, oh, we didn't take care of our business. As a taxing entity, everybody in this community is paying extra because of those hundred and thirty-four properties that aren't on the rolls, that aren't being taxed. We didn't sell them. We didn't cut them out. Somebody made a fair offer on them, so we can recoup the taxes that were owed on them, and they can go back on the roll, and entities can start collecting taxes on them. Wherever they're at and what the problems are with them, don't have anything to do with our decision-making process. It's about putting a property back on the roll that we're not getting any money for. That's all it's about, and it's a fair offer, and the entity made an offer. Apparently, the fort had taken action to buy these for twelve thousand dollars last year and didn't go through with it.
Well.
We've got.
The whole story, but it's a complicated story, but.
I don't see that we have a choice but to accept it, to be completely honest with you, because it would be negligent to do anything else.
No, I don't agree. It's negligent to not consider the better offer, which is gonna put more money into the taxing entities.
This process does not involve bidding war at this point.
I'm not saying it's a bidding war. I'm just saying that if there's an offer for eighteen and it's not responsible, as a board, in my opinion, to accept a lower offer, knowing that there's a higher offer, that would be negligent on our part, if you ask me. That's my opinion.
And my understanding is the board did not take action to make that offer.
Well, I think they did, or they are.
Director Palmer, if, if I'm, if I may, I believe the confusion might be at the time that the fort authorized to negotiate up to the twelve thousand five hundred proposed by the taxing entities that certain concerns about whether or not these lots also get votes had not come to light. But those concerns have been voiced by multiple entities involved. And now I think this is the impetus for why the fort is willing to ask or, you know, pay a little more. And then also the reason why, you know, our, the understanding of the process is that like, it is not a bidding war and that, yes, you know, like, this either has to, yes or no, go through all the different taxing entities. And thus far, not to say anything on this district, but the only ally the fort has had, if I could say in so many words, has been Mudd, who has been faithfully voting down a third party buying this hundred and thirty lots in favor of the better interest of Fort Clark. Oh, sorry.
Again. Can I? The votes have no relevancy in what we're doing whatsoever.
Well. I know I'm not up on a law, but this is Kenny County appraisal district. I thought, where's the water board? Why are we even issuing this and putting it in our deal? I don't understand.
Directly, directly mentally, the way this process works, whenever a property is taken back by the taxing entities because they have not received taxes. It's done by the appraisal district, who we contract with to collect our taxes.
Okay.
And everything, okay? They, they, they hold it in trust, because we're not the only ones that have a piece of that. They owe us a little money on taxes. They owe the county a little money on taxes. They owe Fort Clark a little money on taxes.
Okay.
That's how that works.
But like you said, it's not a bidding war.
First come, first served. It's not a bidding war.
I'm not trying to.
This is not a public comment, but please go ahead.
I spoke last time. I'm gonna speak again. The letter that I gave you is to the appraisal district because we, they will not put out our bid again unless this is rejected. End of story. So we're offering more money, and if we need to go higher, we will go higher. But this is for the good of the fort. It is, it is not a good thing if one person gets a hundred and thirty-four lots and has a hundred and thirty-four votes.
May I ask you a question? Is there any, is there any limit on how many memberships I can buy in Fort Clark Springs? Okay.
But nobody's gonna spend that amount of money unless they know what they want. I don't understand why you wouldn't want to accept more money.
Uh, I don't understand why the court didn't buy them last year.
Because we didn't understand the whole situation. And I explained that very nicely and very honestly. I came up here and spoke, and I was as honest as honest can be. I'm the general manager.
Be very honest with you. The fort sold lots in an unimproved area that they had no intentions of ever developing. And now you're running hunting operations out there, and you have stranded lots out there, and it creates a problem. And you've brought an internal struggle to this entity saying, please, please, don't do this because this is gonna create a problem for us. It's already a problem for us. We have a hundred and thirty-four properties that have been off the rolls for twenty years.
And another month is gonna hurt that without you taking a high, when it's been that long? I mean, honestly?
May I ask?
You're right.
Are you, are you through?
Yes.
We said, everybody say it's not a bidding war, but it is because the fort, it's like playing cards. They, I don't know this person, Potts. They walked in here, I wouldn't know him, but they knew what his offer was. Now they've made a higher offer. You know, it would seem to me that, you know, it is a bidding war.
It's not the way the process works.
Well, in effect, it's the way it is working.
Do it legally, can't work that way, but.
So what's, what I would prefer, instead of an up or down, accept or reject, is to table it till next month. It gives Potts a chance now that he knows what y'all's card is. And if he comes in, you know, with more money, I mean, then, you know, I guess the fort.
It does not.
Same thing.
It does not. It does not work that way.
It is working that way.
No.
That's the way it is working.
We have to vote this up or down.
I'm.
It has no relevance on whether we're gonna get another one. We got another one.
I'd rather have a motion to table it so we get more money.
Let's, let me clarify.
Let's let me clarify. So if it is rejected, then it goes back to the district. The district will come back with a higher bid. Just like they came to.
Lots will still have a chance to to bid.
If it's rejected, anyone can make an offer.
He can go back. So the next, then then the highest bid will come back to us or come back to all the entity.
The next bid will come back to us.
Wes, I agree with Charlie. I move to table it.
Well, you can't.
A motion. We got a motion.
You can't move anything because we got a motion for this one second.
My motion is gonna stay as it is.
But you understand, Matt, that.
I understand that. That's up to y'all.
Matt's motion is to vote this down.
You don't have to second.
Okay, he doesn't. He doesn't have a second at the moment. And it will die for lack of a second if it doesn't get one.
Well, Mr. Roberts has a point. This quit being a bidding war whenever it didn't sell on the square, whenever they had an auction. That's what the auction is set for. And they've been carrying it all this time. I'm not. I don't know these people. I don't. I've never been on the fort, but one time now Halloween, I was scared to death. So.
That's good because it was Halloween.
No, I was scared of all the people, but anyhow.
So Perry, can I wait? Can I give you some information?
It's just, it's just that it was already up on option block. I understand your point.
So well, I gather something to add to what it is. So let me, let me give you a little more information. These lots are not. Developable. You can't put a mobile home. You can't put a house. They don't have water. They don't have sewer. They don't have power. So and and the reason somebody wants to buy an unusable lot is their business and it's not a legal thing that we need to get involved with. If the fact exists that somebody says it's for votes, that's nice to know. But that's not exactly what we're voting on. But but these lots are essentially worthless other than having a vote, in my opinion. So. The fort, in my opinion, and I live on the fort, but the fort. Would not be looking out for the best interests of their members by offering twelve thousand dollars even by offering five thousand dollars. Why would they do that for something that at that point they deem useless? They don't need a hundred and thirty-four votes. They don't think those lots have any use. People were sold them a long time ago before the current. You know, I mean, way back in the day, you know, Brown and Root, not Brown and Root days, but Great American Home State or whoever.
Autumn was conveyed nineteen seventy-nine.
So I mean, it was back way before the, you know, the change from the HOA. It was the original people that set up the fort that sold these, you know, oceanfront property in Arizona type deal.
I understand.
Okay, so why would the fort current leadership pay the current fort members money to buy something for twelve thousand dollars for twelve hundred dollars that's useless? It only became valuable when Mr. Potts came along and said, I'll buy it. For essentially, you know, ten cents on the dollar. I don't know. That's not exactly right, but you know, low ball offer. That gives him, you know, certain rights. So now the fort is interested and that's smart because the fort needs to be interested because there's an issue. And we as a taxing entity who has. You know, the vote on this deal along with the other taxing entities. Has to decide, you know, what's right. And in my opinion, what's right is. You know, not just one issue, but if you just weigh it on what the monetary deal is. We can get more return if we wait or deny this option. Because if somebody offered you fifteen thousand dollars for your truck or somebody offered you sixteen thousand dollars for your truck, what would you do? You haven't promised your truck to the fifteen thousand dollar guy. You got two offers at least.
I'm the type of guy, the guy that offered me the first is gonna get it.
Well, that's, I mean, that's, I mean, I, I, I mean, I'm not, I don't vote for you. I'm just telling.
I'm the kind of guy that if you offer me twelve five for my truck and somebody else offers me fifteen and you come back and you you already, you already backed out of your twelve five and you offer me eight, I'm not selling to you.
Right, well.
Because I don't trust you. Follow through on what you do.
That's your opinion, because I don't know. It is to you.
What? Question.
Your business, dude.
Question.
We never offered the money. They offered us the.
Question. If the if the fort buys the lots, are they still subject to tax or is the fort taxing them?
Yes.
But all of those taxes.
The fort will be paying future taxes.
For reference, all those, all those lots are about seven to eight dollars of taxes per year.
Yeah, but still.
Less than a thousand bucks a year for the entire batch of them.
Okay, but but the if the fort buys it, they'll still be taxing.
Yes, we will. And Jason did have a point. Their lawyer offered us the twelve thousand. We didn't offer it to them. And we were going to take it. But based on, we weren't sure and we were listening to some of our members and they were unsure. So we decided to table it, just like this happens when you have a forum and a forum, you table things because you're not sure. Well, it became very important for us to get it. And I wouldn't be standing here when I could be at home at supper with my husband thirty miles away. pleading with you all to please understand that this is important. I truly am not gonna make any money on this, but it's gonna be better for the fort. We want to de-plat them and put it back into green area. Which would be good for the fort.
Let me add on to that.
Is to please reconsider.
You know, let me add on to her comment, Charlie, real quick. Look at this county. There are lots of stakeholders. We talked about the permities being stakeholders. We talked about. The city being a stakeholder, Spofford is a stakeholder. The fort. Is a huge stakeholder. And I think we need to respect their opinion on this issue.
I have a question. Please. I just want clarification. So if y'all vote it down, but let's hypothetically, Matt, you change your your motion to his and you vote this down. Which it sounds like would be great for the fort. And and they will be able to put the lots back into the fort. Then I heard her say that they'd replat them. And then go back on the tax rolls. Am I right so far, Wes? That's all I'm asking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I they don't have. In complete honesty, the only question before this board is whether to put a hundred and thirty-four properties back on the tax rolls, what the fort does or the replating or votes or anything else are completely irrelevant to what this board has to decide. If they want to consider that and take that into consideration, that's fine. That's not the way the process works. And to be completely honest, I think we're putting ourselves in a hell of a liability. Position even talking about it. You you're either gonna accept the offer or you're not. And and the only thing I think that you could hang your hat on is if you don't like the offer.
Um, well, knowing that there's a higher offer, why would you like the offer? I mean, that's.
Uh, yeah, well, there's not a higher offer.
There is.
No, there isn't.
No, there we technically, there's not yet.
There's not.
Okay, I don't know.
It's not an offer.
If you don't believe the general manager or the director, then you know.
We've got a motion. Let's move on.
We've got a motion. We don't have a second. Do we have a second to Matt's motion to vote this down? I'm gonna say it dies for lack of a second. I move that we accept the offer.
Wait, I want a move that we table it until next month.
Yeah, he had the first.
That's all right. I've made the motion.
Well, no, no.
No. We've got a second.
What?
You can vote it down. Well, I've made the motion. I've 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 discussed this.
You're in the same position as you were when mine. You can second it or not.
It's already been seconded.
Uh, by whom?
Me.
Okay.
Now, motion has been made to accept. Uh, Chad Potts's offer on these hundred and thirty-four pro- properties. It's been seconded by the director ward. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed. Does not carry.
And I make a motion. We table it till next month.
I think it voted down.
Don't be quiet up there.
So what's the what's the verdict? Voted down, voted down?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You didn't accept it. More against. Not approved. Okay, number eight. Discussion possible action. Accept this proposed rules. I move we strike the rules and start over.
I'll lag in there. Be a leggery.
Be glad to. These, this set of proposed rules are kind of like spitballs thrown at the wall. Uh, the reasons that they were stated for starting their creation process are not what are reflected in them. Um, if you want to go by them one at a time, three, one oh one, this rule was contemplated. So somebody that asked for fifty acre foot or less didn't have to go through a permitting process. The reason it was contemplated is because one commercial. Potential commercial permittee, a solar farm, wanted. A toilet. They want to have a bathroom and a sink. And they didn't want to go through the permitting process because they didn't understand it. Or how simple it was for them to get that. And someone said, well, they shouldn't have to go through a permitting process. If it's a commercial permit and they only want to have a bathroom, they shouldn't have to go through that. And now we've got this rule talking about a commercial permit for regular use. A lot of language that came straight out of a rule that was. Uh, in this district about twenty, twenty-three years ago, that was quickly taken out as soon as people started filing for it. And it does not accomplish its sin. The problem with it is you didn't ask them, commercial permit holder, how commercial use works. And it's not on the amount that you pull out. It's how fast you pull it out of the ground. That's what determines what you can do with it. It's the withdrawal rate. And it should be tied to the withdrawal rate if that's what you're wanting to do. And there's a lot easier way to do it within the rules. That aren't even contemplated in any of this. I I I don't know what you were thinking whenever you came up with it.
Wes, allow me when you're done.
I'm not finished.
Okay.
We can go through the rest of them too, but.
Well, we need to stay on this one until we're done with this.
No, go through. That's fine. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter to me. Uh, the second one contradicts itself. Uh, page two, number B, the district shall manage total groundwater production on a long-term basis to achieve an accurate desired future condition and consider number one. The mag determined by the executive administrator. I'd like to know who the executive administrator is to start with. I think you need to put Texas Water Development board behind that. And then down C, you say the mag is unreliable and you're not going to consider it. So the rule conflicts itself. You say you're gonna follow it and you say you're not. What are you trying to do?
Are you asking me or?
Yeah, whoever's in support of it. I because I don't understand.
I I. Would say that. Uh, let's start back at the beginning. Rule number one.
Well, no, Director, Director Gates want me to go right on through it. So I'm gonna go right on through it. So there's only four of them.
There's only.
It's not real complicated here.
Okay.
Uh, number three point oh six. Board action on contested case hearing. If you're trying to change the times of when people. Can file for contested case hearing and extend it without any consideration of the rest of the rules that revolve around this. These are all presented out of context. They're not in context with the rules at all. Because they weren't considered in context with the rules. And that's why I don't support them. The next one, annual groundwater pumping report. This is gonna be a big one. Everybody wants to have monthly reporting. Okay, this started off because the engineer said we have an aggregate reporting system. Where we have five or six wells being reported on one pumping report. And I don't know how much came out of each hole. That's what he wanted. What we've got.
Your opinion, that's what you want.
No, that's what he said in the letter that's in in your book.
One of the things he said.
Okay, whatever. Anyway, uh, what you're wanting to do is put a rule in place that requires monthly reporting to the district office. So you want to put your staff. Make them keep up with that when you're already getting it. And we're trying to move to real time.
Not already getting it, Wes? You're not getting monthly reports? No, you're not.
We heard a field tech. We got a field tech going out and looking at the people that are using water, look at reading their meters. That's a monthly report.
How many readings do you have? Marty, weigh in on this for January and February. In January, how many meter readings did you get from the permitted well?
Um, at least about thirty or forty-five of them.
How about in February?
About the same.
About thirty?
Yeah.
How many permitted wells are there?
Uh, active?
No permitted wells.
No, active is a good, active is a good one.
Well, that needs to, that need to do annual pumping reports.
Fifty-four.
But there was like a hundred and fifteen.
That's how many permit wells there are, but they're not all active. They're not all connected or anything. We're not pumping one. They're not. There's no electricity going to them.
And no need to go look at them.
Well, yeah, so whatever, we can clarify that, but you know, the. What the engineer wanted was. Meter readings from every active. Well, that exists in Kenny County. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. Jim Burden said he would like to have a monthly meter reading. From every.
But also we've been going back and forth on what we are.
I know. I'm not saying, you know, I'm not saying because you got thirty and there's fifty-four. I'm not talking, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying.
I I would like to interject in here right now. Uh, we're in the process. Our engineer, Jim Burden, has talked to some folks and come up with a retrofit for the current macro meters. That will allow us real-time data instead of monthly. And we've already got permittees that are willing to put it on their meter. So we're moving way past monthly reporting. That's why I'm not supporting the rule. We've got a monitoring system in place now and we've got a monitor in that well. We get real times on the meters out there where I'm at. People are pumping water down by Standard Lane when they're pumping water. If those pressure waves come back and hit that spring, we're gonna see it in the instrumentation. And we know when they were pumping, when it turned on, when it turned off, how much it was, because it goes straight up to the cloud.
And how many of those are out there on the wells? Ten or so?
There are none right. Normally, I told you that we're trying to work on this and we've got people in agreement with it. So instead, what we want to do is shut this down and throw it, tell them that you're gonna report monthly, even though we've got somebody already going out there that hired. A year ago to do that.
Audit it.
It doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
To audit it, not to do it.
Oh, Wes.
You wanna read this?
Jim's on.
Yeah, you can jump in anytime.
Marty, what was your position? What were you hired for?
To check meters.
To audit meters or to read them?
To read them, to go out and read them.
Where's that written, Blake?
It's. Sorry, little job description.
Really? Can I get a copy of that?
Sure.
Okay.
Not right now, but I'll get it to you and then you can share it then.
Okay.
I've got a question if you don't mind.
Sure.
If there's, say, fifty-four meters.
That are active, that are.
That are active, permitted meters. And that means you say you read.
About forty-five or so.
A little ago.
I can't turn right off the top of my head.
That's means there's other meters and not being checked every month. So to me. I think they need to be checked every month. I'm not saying these rules are right, but anytime. This stuff has been put off for two years, in my opinion. It's better to make a mistake and might have some rules that you can change and and if. Whenever you don't do anything. Then that's harder to fix than anything.
Director, I don't know of another groundwater conservation district in this state that requires monthly reporting.
Well, look at the AA, Wes.
Well, they're not a groundwater conservation district.
Think they're pretty similar.
They are not a groundwater conservation.
When I worked at.
What are they?
Five years.
They are a special creature of the legislature.
All right.
Ask any of your representatives. That's exactly the phrase that they will use.
That none of them require monthly reports will.
Now, when I worked at the Pinto five years ago. We had to go in there and take a picture of it and take the reading every month. At the Pinto. I worked there. I know. I did it. And I think it's very active because some months people use more than others because we were flood irrigating then and then he put in a pivot right as I left.
Man, some of us haven't used our wells in five years.
Well, I understand that, but the ones that are inactive, I don't, you know, you don't have to go check. That's.
That's not what this is.
It's some of them that are active or on.
What this says is everyone is gonna come down here on the tenth of every month and turn in a report. That's what this rule says. It's excessive. Yeah, it does.
No, you said come, you said.
It does not say annually.
You said come down here. They just, you know, just report. They don't have to come down here.
You know, I have to pay my monthly water bill in Spofford. I'm even on the city council and I still have to pay.
Yeah, who reads your meter?
My wife. She reads all of them in town.
Meter reader does.
The meter reader does, yes. But if only half of them are being read or two thirds of them being read, what's the other ones doing? This is my question. That's, I don't care if y'all do it.
It's only a county in, I think it's only a county of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand acres.
We can get around it real easy. Yeah, so Wes, just one other thing while we're just randomly talking about this. Dr. Bill Hutchinson. Correct me if I'm wrong, and he kind of, you know, left us in the lurch a little bit on his resignation. But. But the story before I was elected was Dr. Hutchinson is the man. He is like what we rely on, he is what we're basing, what we do, what we manage. We're waiting for his, you know, model that's going to, you know, help us solve our problems. He says right here, and I gave you guys all a copy of this. Director Shot, Director Bland, everybody, whatever, and I can you know, go into this, but what does this say? This is what Dr. Hutchinson recommended to the board two years ago. One of the reasons he quit, if you look at his resignation letter.
Quit is because he's taking his stuff out of context.
Do, we didn't do what he recommended, what he recommended us. He made recommendations to the board and the board has done nothing since he made these recommendations in September of twenty twenty-three. So finally, the process has got to the point where we're going to vote on what he recommended. And you're moving that we just drop all his recommendations. We also paid Greg Ellis, I don't know how much a year to know.
These are not his recommendations.
Wait, wait, Greg Ellis wrote these with Bill Hutchinson's recommendations and you can ask Charlie. Charlie did or did not, Dr. Hutchinson recommend all these rules and doctor and Greg Ellis took what Dr. Hutchinson's recommendations were, put them into legal, you know, writing that should be acceptable to implement those recommendations. And it's our duty to vote on those recommend, I mean, if we're not even going to vote on them.
Uh, yeah, I just made a motion for a vote.
You voted to just throw them all out and.
And start over.
Okay, and it's been a two-year process. We canceled meetings because the process wasn't done right, which the audit is going to tell us we screwed up, I'm sure. And we finally got it right, we finally got to the point where we can vote. And now we're table them or didn't throw them in the trash? I don't think that's the right decision.
I have said to every major rewrite of the rules of this district since its inception, and this is probably by far the weakest attempt I've ever seen.
In your personal opinion?
Yes.
Okay, let's make sure that's, you know, what you're saying. Ridiculous.
Yeah, they are.
You, you're, well, anyway, that's what it is, you got a motion, was it second?
I got a motion, and I got a second.
You seconded it really? Okay, well, let's see what happens.
All those in favor, raise your right hand.
What's your recommendation?
We're striking these rules and starting over.
That's not what I'm saying, what's your recommendation, what are we going to do after this?
We're going to reset a rules committee and start over. So we can get this done right. These were done at a meeting one hour, sitting here arguing back and forth in here, and one director went and did it. And what you got, and what you got.
That's not true.
And what you got is not what was asked for. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote for it. There's a better way to do this. And you've got problems within your rules right now. Everybody's fussing about the testing rules. You know what, I almost took this district five years ago. They need to be fixed. Now, once again, those in favor of striking and starting over, raise your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Okay. We're not starting over, but we didn't pass them either, so floor is open for any motions, boys.
Right, discussion first. Right, my understanding, we've had the public hearing, is that we don't have to take this exactly the way it's written, we can, the board can change it a little bit.
As soon as you change it, you start the process all over again.
You have to have another public hearing?
Yes, sir. Most certainly do.
That's why I went against it.
That's why you need to prepare these properly before you get to this point.
Okay.
I, yeah. I don't think I agree that they're, they're improper, they're, um.
I'm not saying they're improper, I'm saying the way you got to them, you went from point A to point B without any consideration in between. So, and you wound up getting something that is not reflective of what your, what your consultants were asking for and told you the problem was.
So, so that's what we need to do is, is there a motion on rule three oh one, let's start right there. Is there a motion on rule three oh one to accept it as written?
There are no motions, period, right now.
So. Does anybody want to make one?
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, hey, thanks, um, last members of the board, I just wanted to clarify something um, regarding what people are saying that I've said, I thought I was clear in my letter. I do think that monthly uh, numbers are good for every well, not just the aggregate as a permit. However, I do not think that the permittee, the permit holder needs to report those numbers every month. I think this is something absolutely the gister can do. I think, um, Mr. President, Wes, if you'll lose your blade, you'll lose the tours, we've got new equipment that can bring it in. But I can remember Director Palmer, you, a couple of years ago, when we said the permit holders were going to be doing the meters reading, you absolutely refused and didn't want to do that and said we needed to hire a field tech. And that field tech is already, and she can absolutely do it every site. Um, Mr. Midley, I understand that we need every one, but I can tell you that there is a meter up in, uh, Duck Mountain that is hardly ever used, it takes maybe three to seven hours to get up there depending on mud, et cetera. Um, their total permit is three acres, there are six wells up there, those do not need to be looked at every month, they're not used every month. Um, Marcia is correct, um, there are, um, dozens and dozens and dozens of locations within the county that are not used, their meters, they're not used. And the priority meters are being checked, and I think every one of us knows what those are. They are the agricultural and production numbers. And then you've got individuals, and I don't want to name names, that are absolutely fantastic and reporting and calling every time, every time some, some, um, landowners and permittees turn their pumps on, they're sending me a text message or documenting it. And so the idea within the rules, so in my opinion, my opinion only, um, that we need the landowner and the permittee to come in every month to report numbers, I think it's overblown some on the permittees. And again, this is my opinion, for the, um, I think we can do it in real time and the field tech, and you know, if you want every single one done, she could do it in every, every single one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim.
Hey, Jim. Is Palmer.
Yes, sir.
What did you say I said, that I didn't think that permittees should do reports and a field tech should do them? I don't know if you got the right guy.
He does, I was at the meeting.
I remember when he said. So you'll have to show me that, if I said something that said I think the tech should do all the readings, let me correct, let me correct what I think, so you can hear and everybody here can hear. In my opinion, I agree with Dr. Hutchinson, who is our expert that recommended this in the first place. Currently, I believe, and if I change my mind from what I said I believed then, you know, that's fine. I'm in favor of the rule that says the permittee does monthly reports. And it's audited by the field tech as written here in the recommendation from Dr. Hudson. Just so you know, just so we're square.
He's the expert now.
Thanks, Jim.
We don't want to pursue him since he left us and didn't.
Well, I think he's still an expert, it's just, you know, he's not here.
It's just kind of getting mixed messages here.
If, if I, so the rule says I have to report every time.
Yes.
Does it?
Each permittee must record and report to the district the amount of groundwater withdrawn each calendar month. The monthly report is due no later than the tenth day after the end of each calendar month. That's monthly reporting, you're going to come down, you're going to come down here, you're going to send it down here, you're going to send an email, you're going to do something, but you're going to report it every month.
You don't need real time neither.
The tech could come to audit you and check it.
Yeah.
Since the tech's doing it, why don't you just let the tech do it and then they know exactly what day they did it and how that corresponds.
More important, more importantly, you've established a relationship with your permittees.
Guy, you know that, you know how it works.
That's, excuse me, I have the floor right now. More importantly, you're destroying the relationship that you have with your permittees. Nobody has to allow you to enter their property. That's like, well, that's what the rule does, what you're doing is shoving something down the permittee's throat that you're already getting the data for. It makes no sense.
Wes, you can't speak for all the permittees, maybe there are, you're a permittee, but you can't speak for all of them.
I'm turning it on Tuesday and it's different. Then what happens? All the permittees want, we want, we don't buy monthly reporting, if she's getting it, all we're saying is don't make us turn it in too. If she's getting it every month, we were even doing it real time. Calling it in when we were pumping. We've been trying to cooperate, that's all we want the rule to say, as long as, we want you to get the information, we just don't want to be burdened with turning it in, the district's already getting it. We're not even opposed to a lot of the rules. It's how they're, and if your rules contradict, like, like Wes said, your second rule does, that's setting up a lawsuit, because if rules contradict, that's bad. We're not opposed to the rules, we just want them done right, that's all I'm saying. We want them written correctly. We're not.
We need to do something, the board needs to do something, we need to vote on these rules. So.
Then make a motion.
Yeah, I'm not going to move on the first one, so let's, is there going to be a motion on the first one or just going to die?
I've already moved. And it's already done, there's no motion on the floor right now, sir.
Okay, so, well, I don't, I'm not going to take your, I'm not going to take your job, but does anybody want to make a motion on the first rule, rule three zero one?
Uh, that's not my job, you can make a motion anytime you want. Why are you calling for somebody else to do it, if you feel about it?
I don't want to, I don't want to, so I'm going to move on.
I have a panel, but you don't want to move.
I just want that rule to die, because I don't agree with it.
So, then move.
I moved that we accept rule three zero one as written.
Okay, motion's been made, motion's been made and seconded to accept rule three oh one as written. Rule three oh one pertains to the general manager issuing a point, uh, permit with for withdrawal less than fifty acre feet. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign.
I'm not going to vote.
Doesn't care.
I, I think that y'all.
I moved to accept rule three zero two.
I'm going to say what I need to say.
Sorry, Matt, I'm sorry.
Anybody saying anything.
Okay, go ahead, Matt, you got the floor.
Uh, I think y'all are all missing the point. So all these rules that we set down and all these rules that you're going by was all under, uh, basic uh, thinking that went to spring flow, am I correct, yes or no? And.
I can't answer the question.
You have to say it again?
No, everything was monitored, the spring flow, that's what this is all about. It's the spring, yes it is, so.
No.
Yes, so this is what I'm trying to say, I want y'all to understand this. Dr. Bill was trying to, and his last deal was to set up the zone. That's what you need to be worried about is the zone. If you're reading meters, which meters would you want to read? You want to read the meters first, the ones that are affecting this right here, not everybody else, the ones that are affecting this right here. That's what you're wanting to protect, it's a spring. That's it. You're wanting to try to protect, you're going to go check every meter in the whole county, which has nothing to do with anything. There's only a certain amount of wells that have to do with this. That's it. Y'all, I don't see how y'all don't understand that. You have a certain area, a certain zone, that your watershed. That water comes right in here, there's well, those wells are the ones you need to be monitoring first. But yet, we want to run around here and check, oh, let's go all the way to the east that has nothing to do with this. Go all the way to the west that has nothing to do with this, go all the way south that has nothing to do with this. It's just those wells in that area that have effect right here. And if you can't focus on that, then we're not going to get anywhere.
Matt, we didn't write these rules, Dr. Hutchinson recommended these rules, and Greg Ellis wrote these rules.
But Dr., but Dr. Bill was trying to come up with where the zone was at, which was the most important to the left.
Fine, I understand that, I understand.
So if you want to write the rules to protect that spring, then you need to do it the right way. This isn't the right way, I'm telling you that right now. Because you're looking at everything else other than what you're supposed to be looking at.
What we're supposed to be looking at is included in this. So we're going to look at what does matter by including what does matter in this rule, it's included in the rule. No, it doesn't exempt people that might not be included. But this rule is going to require zone one wells to report monthly, which is what we need.
But you don't know where the zone one wells are at. Because that.
We know good enough where they're at and one, the, once the science, once we get the new scientists.
Name all the wells in zone one.
There's a map.
I don't want to hear that, I want you to tell me the.
No, I don't memorize it, Matt, come on, man.
Gentlemen, it's not burning to the rules that we're, we're voting on at the moment.
Move to accept rule three zero two as written.
Most have been made, there are second.
It's about the mag, the mag is unreliable and should not be used for permitting, that's what Dr. Hutchinson said. I do have one question.
Sure.
I'll, I'll swear when I talk to Greg, once we have the public hearing, you know, the board can change these, you'll make minor changes, but it does not require an additional public hearing.
My understanding is if we make changes, we have.
If we make any changes.
Any changes you have to, you have.
That's what I remember Greg saying.
Repost them.
And I was blown away because I'm like. That's why I wanted to get all this refined before we went to public hearing that stuff.
Because what, what they're, what we're voting on is the public doesn't have any option to, to vote on anything if we change it.
That's right, they don't have, they don't have an opportunity to comment on it. And, and they have to be given an opportunity to comment on it. So when we make changes to it, it has to go back through the process again, they have to be posted, they get to review it, they come back and they comment on it. We wait a certain period of time and then we come back and we go from there. But if we change after they're proposed, then we have to start the process over again.
I've got a question.
If, yes, sir.
We've been, I wasn't here for the first, I've only been here a short time. But this has been going on for two years. And we've been in a drought for a long time, and I'm not talking about go reading all these wells just because it's a drought right now, I walk these pastures every day. And I don't know if it'd be right, but I'd like to make a motion, we don't do anything until we get a damn drought plan. I'm not trying to be rude or anything. But the whole deal is, if we have this drought going on, none of these wells are going to be doing any good. If we don't get a drought plan, they're set this thing up, and that's what these rules and regulations are supposed to be for. And we don't go by the ball, or wherever he's supposed to be, the number one guy that.
Hydrologist.
Hydrologist, we don't go by his recommendations, what are we going to do? Just stand there and argue with each other forever? It's been two years.
And these are his recommendations, just so you're square.
I don't understand all these.
I know, but these are his recommendations.
Lawyer language to me, so I don't understand every bit of it, but if we don't fight to get us a drought plan.
Oh, we do need one.
I checked.
My opinion.
Every county around us is in four or five drought. Every county around us. And she's, what'd you say, was in three or four right now?
We're not in the extreme, we're.
Yeah, where I've been, so I mean.
One notch underneath the worst.
So I mean, I don't understand these basically. But if we don't get a drought plan, it won't make any difference what we do here. If we don't have some way to control everything, been fighting it for two years, if we don't have something to go by and get started on this stuff, it'll never get done. If we don't do something, it's worse than making a wrong decision here and then having to go through the process one or two times again to change a little bit of things on this thing. We have to have recommendations, somebody that's evidently more intelligent than we are.
Evidently, that won't work for us anymore.
Well, we have the money in the deal, let's hire somebody that will, that understands this stuff and knows what we're doing, and let's get something done, because it's been two years.
Well, there's a couple of people trying to get something done and a whole bunch that, that aren't really pulling any weight.
I'm out for the war, I don't care about anything else, all this other law, these rules and all these regulations don't mean anything if we don't do anything.
That's true.
So I mean, that's my.
We have a motion on the floor without a second.
I don't even know what the motion was, y'all got.
Who's second, who's seconding it?
No one has, we don't have a second.
The motion is to accept rule three oh two as written.
Rule three oh two is written. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Wrong.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept rule three point oh two as written, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. No action.
You're abstaining on all of them.
May I ask you something, Wes?
May I ask you something, Wes?
Sure.
You know, these, these rules in the drought management plan are two different.
Yes, sir. I understand that.
Yeah, the, these, the whole rule committee thing had nothing to do with the drought management plan. That's, that's a separate thing. This, this does not address the drought plan at all. It, you know, I agree, we need the drought management plan. But, but these were not, this, this is not part of it. You know, the rules were, were, were for a different purpose.
But that's my point. We're sitting there arguing about these rules and we don't have a drought plan and the drought has been on it. Because I worked at the Pinto, the creek dried up after I left. It's been five years that creek's been dried up. It's been going on for a long time and there's nothing done about it. This, this is what we're supposed to be here for, isn't it?
That's the drought management plan. This, this is.
You know, like housekeeping or something.
What's before us right now are the rules. Not to have, we don't have a decision to make on drought management right at the moment. It's not up on the agenda.
I moved to accept rule three point oh six delta as amended and written in this product.
Motion's on the floor, gentlemen, without a second.
Second.
Motion's been made and accepted, uh, motion has been made and seconded to accept rule three point oh three D as written.
Three point oh six.
Oh, six D as amended. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I moved to accept rule four point oh two Bravo as written. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the rule four point oh two B as written. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. All those opposed. Motion carries.
I moved to accept rule four point oh four, annual groundwater pumpage report as written.
Got a motion on four, guys.
I have a second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept rule point oh four, uh, four point oh four as written. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed. Motion does not carry. Let's see, one, two, three, four to clear on that one. Not true.
Mine's going on the abstaining.
I know, I got, I got, I got you in there.
I'm sorry, sir. Who, who voted in favor of that?
Uh, you got on the last one?
Uh huh, four point oh four.
Uh, Gaines, Ward, myself.
Wait, 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 wait. Not four point oh four. No.
I'm talking about four point oh four.
Well, oh, you're talking about who voted in favor of it? Oh, in favor was Director Palmer and Director Menley. The other, the other, uh, were against. We had four against and we had one abstaining. Okay.
Time out, Wes. Rule three point oh three fox trot is repealed. Is that part of disregard? That's part of four oh four?
Yeah, I don't think we missed anything.
Nope. We're good.
Yeah, I think it's all, I think it's all there. We're voting on each one of them. I'll see if I'm missing my notes here. Okay, next item. Discussion of various committees. Gentlemen, we're fixed to get dinged on our state audit for some things that I mentioned in the very first meeting, like our bylaws and our rules being in conflict. So we need to set some committees. We need a budget, we probably need a budget finance committee. We probably need a bylaws and a rules committee. And I would like to be a citizen advisory committee. I can set these things. Uh, I've looked for board input. I've looked for people to volunteer for this. Nobody seems to be interested other than the rush committee that's fixing to come up. So if nobody volunteers, I'm going to start looking in the community and putting some committees together so they can come back at us and tell us. Where some of the issues are because it's not staff's job to go run this down. You can't do this in sixty hours a week. Uh, we need some help. And the board, the board, if the board's not going to get involved in it, then somebody else is going to have to get involved in it because we got to run it down. There's a lot of this stuff that we can fix before we get dinged in May on the annual audit. Uh, we have a lot of test permits out that we probably need to get up for hearing. Uh, we have conflicts in between our bylaws and our rules that need to be fixed. It has to take action by this board. Nobody can fix that. I can't go and just edit it.
So what, what are the different committees you're talking about? You got budget and finance committee?
I think we need a budget finance committee. I think we need a bylaws and a rules committee. And I think we need a citizens advisory committee.
Is there a drought management plan committee in there anywhere or it's going to be separate?
You want, the board wants to set that, you can.
There better be one of those too, then.
The board can set that because I'm going to tell you something. Drought management doesn't make it rain.
Well, are you saying it's just rain or what are you saying?
I'm saying a drought management plan is not going to make it rain.
So?
Exactly. You're trying to do a drought management plan in the middle of a drought. You're a little late.
That's when you do drought.
You're just a little bit late.
That's when you do drought management plans, Wes. That's.
No, that's, no, you got it. You got to have it in effect before you get to the drought for them to have any impact. Because at this point, they're not going to do anything.
You said a citizens advisory.
So what are you saying? Don't get a drought plan?
I don't understand why you think it's a priority whenever you have a state audit coming out in May. Hey, you got a whole bunch of stuff that are priorities.
Or you're laughing that the drought management plan, the lack of one is funny?
I, I'm laughing at it. I'm laughing at you thinking that that's a priority with what we've got on our plate.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I think, I think that's pretty comical.
Well, you're entitled to your opinion.
Well, you should have been down here five days this past week with six state auditors and eight computers sitting at this desk, which you were.
I don't need to tell them their business. They know what to do. They'll tell you what they found. So let's just wait and see what they found.
Yeah, let somebody else do all the work. I'm just going to come down here to play one this week. Yeah, okay.
Play how it's working, Wes, but.
Yeah, I see how it works.
Okay, man, just keep talking and highlight yourself.
What are the, what, what different committees are you talking about?
Budget and finance. These are just, these are just off the cuff things that I think that we need to have. I think we need to have budget and finance committee. I think we need to have bylaws, a rules committee. I think we need to have a citizens advisory committee. I think there's some other things that we come up with. You want to have drought contingency?
You don't think we need a drought plan committee?
That, that's a. I have already told you it's not a priority, right?
That's number eleven. Number eleven is a drought management plan, Charlie, not a committee. Like, there was a committee and we can talk about how well that worked.
We can get that up right here at eleven, okay? Because, because there's no action to be taken on what we're talking about.
That's true.
I brought this up. I asked this to be put on the agenda because I'm trying to get input and I've been trying to get input from my fellow board members for three months.
All right. I think there needs to be a drought plan committee, drought management plan committee.
No, well, thank you for finally telling me something. Appreciate that.
There you go.
Okay, moving on. Brush control committee, director of the board.
Well, no, but, but back up on this committee thing.
Yeah.
You ma, you made the comment that you wanted to head them off at the pass essentially for, uh, you know, try to get some of this going before we get dinged. I think you're wording with ding by the state. Like, what Janelle said is, they were here, so they've done their field work. All right. And so now they're going to do the preliminary report, run it by a supervisor, you know, get comments from us. And then take it back, you know, back to the supervisor and eventually to someone up the line there. My point, my point is, you know, it, wouldn't it be better to wait until we hear from them to see what specific recommendations they make?
I told this board in December, we had a conflict in between our meeting dates and the bylaws and the rules. And no one has taken any action or been any concerned about it whatsoever. If we're going to get written up for it in that audit, I guarantee you. And we could easily fix it in between now and then. But nobody seems to think that's a priority. That's not.
More important than a drought plan, Wes? You got to be kidding me.
Oh, you don't know what day you're meeting on.
I know what day we're meeting on.
You, you know what day we're meeting on in the rules, but the bylaws say something completely different.
Going to be a major finding of the audit, but just.
Well, you might ought to read if you are.
What do the bylaws say? What do the bylaws say?
Nine o'clock on Thursday morning.
When I first got on the board, we voted to change that.
Well, it didn't get followed through on.
It wasn't changed in the bylaws. You voted, yeah, you voted to change it to six o'clock in the evening. But we didn't get it put in the bylaws.
Okay, we make a motion to change the bylaws to where everybody can come to the meeting?
No, because it's not on the, it's not, it's not on the agenda.
Well, we put it on there for next month.
Why did you put it on there, Wes? If you want it on there, put it on there.
Don't be a smart ass.
I've been trying, I've been trying to get, I've been trying.
Janelle, you want to repeat that, please?
No, I'm not going to repeat it.
Okay, well, speak into the mic.
I'm sure your little toy picked it up.
It did. And that's, you know, that's how it works.
I just asked you not to be a smart ass.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I didn't feel like I was.
Can we, we had these conversations.
Requested to be on the next meeting to vote we could change the bylaws.
Yes, sir. You most certainly, you don't need a mo, you don't need a motion to do that. All you have to do is put in a request to have it on the agenda.
Okay, well, that's, that would help everybody, wouldn't it? Since we're going to be a.
Yeah, my understanding.
Ordinance with, you know, not following the rules, well, the old bylaws.
When, when we voted on it way back then, it's just a technicality. It didn't change the bylaws or.
Yes.
I, I don't understand why the vote didn't cover that. I mean, the fact it's not in the bylaws, we still had the vote.
It needs to be fixed. I don't know which one's right and it doesn't matter to me. There needs to be continuity in between the two. And if there's un, if there's incontinuity in between those two, what else is there in continu, in between?
Well, we're just talking about this one thing now.
Well, that's the only thing I found.
All right, so.
Put it on there.
So brush control committee and I'll do bylaws. And budget finance. I can't head them up because I'm probably going to be heading up our brush control committee. So I don't need too much of my plate, but I'll help anyway.
Yeah, you volunteered on that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
What, you're looking for volunteers? Let's get some.
What did Blake say? He would volunteer on?
Oh, don't worry. I'm writing them down right now. You don't want budget finance?
I did budget and finance and bylaws. I don't know what you're signing up.
All right.
Budget. No, I, I think the bylaws and rules, it actually could be pretty interesting because you learn a lot.
Brush control committee. Now, what is that? This, what time do you want?
We're fixing to get to that one. I just wanted to.
It's the next item.
Yep. Okay, well, I thought that's what John already on.
Well, he was actually volunteering for me. Now we can go to that. And you're chairman of that committee, so.
Another committee. For. All right, so we have been in discussion, um, and there was actually some stuff that came out through Texas Parks and Wildlife, I believe. Or it was USDA, but I think it's Texas Parks and Wildlife because it was a lot more money. But basically what they're doing is they are in a joint effort doing a, a major brush clearing project, mulching project. Uh, Edwards County, Kenny County's not in, Uvalde County and, correct me if I'm wrong, in any of these counties, but there's about twelve. And, um, they're going to go through and they're going to clear, uh, not only for fire breaks, but for also for, uh, brush management to help water. So this is a big project that's kicking off. I actually had been visiting with, um, uh, a few people at state level about getting something like this going. In Kenny County where we could do a mass, uh, brush clearing project to, um, do science on, research on. So, uh, in the recharge area of the, uh, spring, um, Matt said it earlier. The area that goes up towards Stolarosa and east Kenny County and into Campwood, a, a large block up there is what we're thinking. Uh, get rid of some cedar and stuff like that. The state level was very interested. It was just cool because that came out yesterday on them doing this big project. And it's actually got some very good funding behind it, uh, where property owners can actually, uh, take advantage of it and, uh, do some good work on their property. But, um, we basically had, uh, a meeting on the brush control committee, um, myself, uh, Mr. Robinson. And, uh, Mr. Shot were there and we had a good visit about how we want to tackle this and, uh, which direction we want to go with. So what we're in talks with now is USDA, uh, about, um, doing a joint venture to where they have a cost share program. Say that a young farmer applies and they get, you know, three hundred and fifty dollars an acre to clear their property. We would like to step in and maybe offer some kind of, uh, fifty dollar, hundred dollar incentive per acre for fueling an operator to run equipment or spray or whatever they're going to do. Um, the thing that I'm most interested in is the, uh, the bulk clearing, uh, to, to get the science, see what our wells are going to do. Um, I know that Ox Ranch has done a bunch up there. Uh, we had the big fire up there two years ago. It was an awesome fire break. It could have gotten a lot worse, but they had it cleared off. So there's, uh, there's some good things, uh, down the road in this. And I've been wanting to get it off the ground for about a year now. So we're on, we're headed in that direction.
Uh, in addition, we've been, uh, in some of our research, we've also discovered that there are multiple districts throughout the state that are promoting. Uh, natural conservation resource associations, brush management programs on their website. So I'm going to be looking into that over the next month and trying to find out what it, what it would cost us if we went in with an extra page that we had that information on. And it's not really, um, it's basically another resource and promotion of brush management by these districts without necessarily being. What we're talking about is a bigger project to try and look at the watershed that feeds the spring and get brush out of it. Uh, but on a secondary note, I think that we might need to explore having another page on our website. It ties back into all the NCRS programs because I saw this on another district's website. And it wasn't their, it's not their program. It's just, it's on their website. So when people go in, they're looking at water and everything else. They've got a page there that talks about brush management. It kicks them over to N R C S and those programs. And those programs are good. Anything else? Manny, get anything to add to it?
No.
Did we miss anything?
No, not on the brush.
Okay.
Good program.
All right, Charlie, you're up. It's your turn.
What?
Drought management plan.
Oh, sorry. I was looking at brush. I'm still thinking that. I'm like, um.
Now, we just reporting what we've, what we've done so far.
Yeah, drought management plan, um, you know, Greg says we need one. What we've been waiting on. Uh, last year was, was Dr. Bill to come up with his zone one, two, three. Um, I can't access. In his resignation letter, he, he, he referenced him anyway. But I couldn't pull it up. It wouldn't come up on my machine or at the office.
I have a suggestion.
And anyway, so we, we still don't have that. And until we get, as Matt pointed out, until we get the, the science. You know, we're a little bit of a standstill on the drought management. Yes, sir.
Have a suggestion, but it will require board action to do it. Keep going on, so. I have been told that the gentleman that signed that report that was working for L R E. I'd have to go back there and look at his name. I don't remember it. Uh, I don't believe he's working there anymore. But, uh, he is a geologist and a modeler that signed the letter that went with all the data, that all the extra geology. Maybe we can get him to give us a report on what's in them eight layers, since he's the guy that signed the letter. It's just a thought.
Did, did Dr. Bill not, I mean, at our last meeting, there was some discussion whether, whether Bill followed through with all the stuff that was promised from, I mean, all of last year. It was, you know, the geology was going to be finished in May, but then we didn't get a report. The bill said, I have to put it into the model and do this, that and the other. I'll have it done by, you know, November and November rolled around. Well, December and then he quit, then he quit. Did we ever get anything from him on that?
The date codes on the files seem to indicate to me that, no, I don't think we've been billed anything since September of last year. And I think once he finally got the geology, he uploaded it. And I think we've got a resignation letter because he's been up there five months. Oh, no. Oh, we haven't been billed for anything. So he didn't, there's nothing that he was supposed to do or he's billed us for that we didn't get. There's nothing that we haven't, any compensation that we haven't given him that we haven't gotten something from already. He bills us as he, as he went. And so he didn't do anything. He didn't bill us anything on.
And has Greg Ellis confirmed that in his legal opinion, Dr. Hutchinson's exit was not. Uh, he doesn't have any other responsibility to us. In my opinion.
Have you asked him?
I haven't, but I will if you want to let me call him by myself and tell you what he says. But.
Well, I, um, I re, I recommended that you do that.
Need to find out if Dr. Hutchinson has any, uh, Need to find out if Dr. Hutchinson has any, uh, responsibility to us. In my opinion, he does, I mean, we trusted him without a contract, let's say, but he said on multiple occasions, you know, all this investment you're making towards the model that everybody wants, every stakeholder, I think, would probably say, we wanted that model, otherwise we wouldn't have worked towards that model for so long.
Well, we negotiated.
We didn't get it was our fault because we should have probably had a contract that says the model is part of that contract, but whatever. Uh, he said multiple times, you know, when I get you the model, and then he quit. So I, I'll call Ellis and find out if we don't have anything, uh, to do about that, but we're going to have to, I think, Wes, you're on board with this too, and this is part of what you're suggesting. We're going to have to pay more experts, other experts, that guy, another guy, whatever, we're advertising for a hydrologist, I think you said, Janelle? Right, we put a, you know, ad in the whatever, so we're going to need to find a guy that can take those files, and those files are readable, I think, Charlie. You know, you're not going to understand all they say, I'm going to.
I can't even.
They are readable on the right machine, they're, you know, Dr. Hutchinson's not going to cheat us out of that data.
I can open it.
Yeah, you gotta have some software, whatever.
I had to do it on, but I want to put, I want to, I want to put a real fine point on this, and what, uh, what I'm suggesting that we do, okay? We have paid for a lot of geological work, and we've gotten a report that we don't understand, and we need a report from somebody that can dumb it down for us. And I'm suggesting that we get the guy that signed the letter to do that.
Okay.
He might, he, he might be the right guy to ask, if he can do it, it's just an idea.
Anyways, but the, the short answer is if the, the, any drought management plan, our bylaws require that, that we use best science or, you know, latest science, whatever. That's the latest science, we don't have it yet, so we're on hold.
Well, I, I, I think, you know.
And your suggestion, do this guy, I'm all in, let's do it.
Well, the suggestion is we get a report on the geology that we have in the interim while we're trying to find our hydrologists, right? Because I mean, that, that search may take a little while, but maybe in the interim, so we're not hung up. Everybody wants something done, right? Let's move along, let's get somebody to give us an interim report on what we've got and what we paid for, so we can make some decisions.
Yeah, okay.
So I will pursue that if the board is in general agreement and come back with a proposition or, you know, an offer from somebody of what they're willing to do it for or something. If y'all are wanting to pursue that, if you want an interim report on that.
Do we have to put it on the agenda or not?
Uh, I, I don't know, because I'll put it on the agenda, you're going to have to approve it anyway, okay? I just want a general consensus that everybody's on board.
I agree.
Good idea.
Yep.
Sitting on our hands, they can get it on.
I agree wholeheartedly. Okay, got anything else on it, Charlie?
I do not.
I don't want to move on if, if you do, okay. Discussion possible action.
I got something, I do have something on that.
Okay.
I guess we're going to get to it, but maybe Matt, you've been down to the pool lately, the cubic feet per second at Lost Morris Springs. On the gauge on the website says one point one two CFS, cubic feet per second. I was there personally, I got pictures on my phone, I can show you right now. They're draining the pool at the fort because they got to clean it now and then because it gets dirty and that, this, whatever. But when they clean the pool, the gate closes on the pool, so there's no inflow, so there's no inflow to the pool at that gate when they clean it. The other gate controls the spillway, and usually if normal, we had what the DFC goal is, twenty-four CFS. It's gushing down the spillway at, you know, whatever CFS. In theory, that'd be one CFS right now, one point one two, but even that gate is fully closed, and the level is below the top of that gate, and the only flow that's going down the creek is leakage around both of those gates. And it's one point one two cubic feet per second, so close to zero that, you know, that's, that's low. So, to laugh at the need for a drought management plan, I'm not sure is appropriate. And Charlie, I don't know, obviously you spent a lot of time trying to figure out what a drought management plan is. We had a committee, Director Shot was on the committee, Director Gaines and Director Bland were all on the committee, right? Working on a drought management plan that, you know, you guys got some stuff and, you know, limited amount because we're waiting on more science. You know, but I would say best available science is what we have now, and we need to continue to work on that. And we got to have a drought management plan, and we need a committee that's going to work on it. If we got to go back and you want that to include part of the public, we can discuss that. But that needs to be one of our action items. We can fix the bylaws, we can figure out what to do with brush, but we have to work on that, in my opinion. We got to get something because Dr. Hutchinson said we need something. The state says we need something, we got a responsibility in, in our charter, our mission statement says we got.
To have a drought management.
We need to manage the thing, and part of what we need to do includes a drought management plan.
Do you understand that that drought management plan will cut water before a car springs in line?
I do. So be it.
Okay.
We don't have any volunteers for that committee, do we?
It's not a committee yet.
I volunteer for it too, if we have one, we need one, I'll volunteer for it if we have one.
Okay.
Director Manley, you want to be on that committee?
Yes, he already volunteered.
Okay.
Discussion possible action on financial statements.
Let me go through this. Total income, five hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-four cents. Full expenses, two hundred and seven thousand, thirty-one dollars and fifteen cents, the net profit loss, three hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and nineteen cents, everyone taxes receivable, uh, eighty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. Expenses payable, two thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. The net, eighty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. Accounts receivable, twenty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. General fund, eight thousand, one hundred and six dollars and twenty-two cents. The money market, four hundred, one thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Paid in cash, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-one cents. The well log deposit, three thousand, seven hundred. Text pool, eight hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-six cents. The first CD, hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-four cents. Second CD is two hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. That's an action item, isn't it?
No, it is. No, it's not on there, it's one, and I don't think that's the one anyway. That's, I think, most easy to give a report, it's kind of like the brush control committee thing. Right, it's a report.
Uh, let's see. That's an action, well, number twelve, financial statements for February twenty twenty-five, we've got to move to accept them, says possible action.
I'm sorry, did I skip, uh, yep, you're right, that is financial reports, that's what we did. I moved, a second. Motion to manate second to approve the financial statements for February twenty twenty-four, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All of the folks, same sign, motion carries you now. Sorry about that, thank you. Review monthly investment report, that's the one I was looking at, that's just a review.
Yeah.
Janelle, did we ever get an update on when those, uh, notes were going to mature? Did you need me to call them on that?
I, I don't know what to do.
At First State, uh, Janelle. I'm sorry. The notes, the, the investments at First State Bank, did we ever get a notice on when they're going to mature?
Yeah, uh, let's see, one matured in January, okay, the year one, matured in January and it rolled, and then we've got one coming up in June, I believe. June, I think it's June or July. See what we want to do, do we get?
I guess let's stay on top of that, and then we can figure out if we want to roll, we talked about rolling some of it into a textbook.
Textbook.
So we can roll that one into textbook if we want, if it's the board's decision. Thank you.
Anybody else got any questions on that one? Okay, let's move on to our next action item, discussion possible action invoices received and invoices paid.
Janelle question, what is Streamline?
Okay, that's our website.
Okay, I just didn't recognize the name.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second. Motion to manate second to approve. Uh, the invoices received and paid, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, let's carry on. Uh, review text water development board drought index, aqua monitoring data. I don't want it, I already looked at it, it's ugly. And brown and dry.
Marty, you said we didn't have this today, right? We got technical difficulties.
At the beginning of the meeting.
All right, so we'll fix that for the next time, I guess, but that says severe drought, right, Wes, just so we're square?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's.
Severe.
Well, the one that I looked at had four, some of them have five levels and some of them have four. We're one below the worst, okay, I mean, I think the one I was looking at had one through four, and we were at three.
All right, and just so US seasonal drought outlook, so just so I'm reading this right.
Uh.
Drought versus. First one, water weekly, whatever, you know, the top one and the bottom one, those fancy, you know, colored pictures. You give me tab fifteen stickers on it. Right, the ones that Director Shot's looking at right here, this one.
It's on the fifteen page.
You know, so that, that doesn't bode well for anybody's well or for any surface water. Wind Creek, Pinto Creek, Lost Morris Creek, everybody that, you know, wants to do whatever they want with their permitted water, wants to grow whatever they're growing. You know, it's not looking good, just so we're having a discussion on the situation. Severe drought, continued severe drought. All right, just.
Most of us that are in production kind of keep looking at it about fourteen months out, we're aware of it.
Yeah, I know.
The only silver lining in any cloud that I've seen on long range forecast is the fact that after the next three months, we're in equal chances of either getting above average or below average, and that's about the only silver lining that we have right now. And what that generally means is they don't know if El Nino or else.
They've got their ass.
Lightning, they don't know if it's going to flip, yeah, they don't, they, they can't tell whether it's going to move or not.
Well, we're in, at their, in a country.
Yeah.
We're talking about selling all the cattle.
I, I saw.
Twenty-four thousand acres and we're only running a hundred and forty heads. We can't get on grass, stuff that we've moved nine months ago. We can't put them back on that pasture because there's nothing left, didn't have nothing to grow back. So, I mean, the drought deal is the most important, all these rules and stuff didn't mean anything, we don't have water. This whole country would die.
Well, the whole thing about it is, is if you look at the levels, we're not short in the groundwater. So, the thing is that we need to be looking at is probably enhancing rainfall, and nobody's talking about that.
Well, we can't enhance that, we, like I brought it at the meeting, the first meeting I come to, these wind turbines and stuff like that, they've got to have a change in effect on our weather.
They may, I, I know that the pattern has been getting drier here and drier.
And drier.
And I've noticed that over the last twenty years.
All down to seventy-seven, all the wind turbine, and they've got over sixty right across the fence from us out there.
On a, on a personal note, that's really, really weird, in the last six months, Pinto Creek is actually showing signs alive. I've got water coming in there and holes filling up. I don't have any surface springs blowing into them, so I assume it's coming from the bottom for the bedrock. I know the water, the water percolates up from the bottom because it snorkel through there enough times that I feel it. Uh, but I don't know where it's coming from, but Pinto has started filling up from the north end of my property going back towards twenty-eight oh four over the last six weeks. It's been very slow, I just noticed there was three or four foot of hole, of extra water in the north hole about six weeks ago, and I've been watching it slowly come down, I don't know if that's because of that whole inverse thing from July of last year or what, I don't know. I just know that it's been, the water levels have been coming up very, very slowly on my property. I don't know why.
We don't, we have wine, overhang over there, there's calcium, seven drips coming down off of it, so we have some whole water on ten thousand acre. That's it, there's no other source.
Oh, yeah, I'm real familiar with that country down there, they know groundwater around there.
And there's all it's feeding is the bees, that's the only thing that's deep enough to water.
There's a reason why they have those holding tanks of a hundred, a hundred and fifty acres down in that part of the county, because they, they got to have it.
I walk through there about every day, so I know the drought is pretty severe. And even the bad part about it, this drought, nobody's taking consideration that ninety percent of these ranches are high fenced. And if these wells go dry, everything dies, everything, not just livestock or the people move or whatever, everything dies in that fence. So that's what I'm looking at, I mean, our whole twenty-four thousands, high fenced over there, and we run out of water, everything dies. So I think there's, needs to be some steps made in order to conserve. I'm not trying to say cut anybody off by a long shot, I know everybody has their rights to have water, but when you keep pumping out of the ground, this ground catching the steps that they're talking about, it comes off from over Edward Tucker, for way over in Rock Springs, if they get a rain over there, it'd be just over here.
Sure does.
You know, and everybody's talking around here like if it rains right here, that that's feeding, it does, it does not feed it. It, it, it may hit it down there about Eagle Pass or further down, but it doesn't go in here. My place is where I have my horses, Rena, it's a bull, because there's a, they rode all the way around, he can raise two inches, and I can go in there three days later and chill it up, and I'll have dust coming out. I mean, we need to be doing something to, to correct this, and I know that's what the.
You had something?
Um, yeah, good afternoon, yeah, I just wanted to say a couple things, and I think, Wes, you hit it, the sleeper lining. Um, I think Mr. Palmer's correct, you look at the surface, there's a lot of dry, but like duly well right now, water's one foot below surface. In Pinto Valley, you've got wells that are still flowing. You go down south, um, south of ninety and some of the, you know, those angles of forty-four hundred, you've got water still coming out of the ground. And so, yes, on the surface, things are very dry, and, you know, I, I took that drought plan together, um, the, and putting that stuff in the kitchen ahead, it just looks very dry. We're in a, that's normally dry season, but there is still problem. And for whatever reason, in some parts of the county, as Mr. Manley said it best, one of, a few years ago, when it rains up to the northeastern part of the county, more immediate influxes to the spring, and it comes up. Well, water that immediately comes up real quick, it also falls real quick. Where in some of the other portions, we have a slow, sleek seepage velocity and a slow migration of continual flow. And, you know, one of the, one of the graphs that I put together shows the duly well, one of the pumping wells up, up in the duly, up in Pinto Valley, the flow in Lost Morris Creek. And the spring responded immediately to the July twenty-third, um, rain. And the duly well went up a little bit, well, the spring started to grind out a week later, duly continued to go up, a clear water line. And so, and right now, it's about a foot below ground, and so there is a kingdom of water underground that is coming in to the Pinto Valley and other areas of, of the county. Mud Creek, there's still five feet of water in Mud Creek right now, as of, as of the days that I'm looking at, I can sit here and look at it right now. Um, and so, yes, we're in a dry period, and on the surface it's more dry, but there's still water in the ground. And I can talk to you, the graph is in your package with the little lines, duly at the top, the orange line is the pumping in Pinto Valley, and the green line is the spring. And the continued pumping in Pinto Valley right next to duly at a very similar elevation is not changing the water level. And the continued pumping in Pinto Valley right next to duly at a very similar elevation is not changing the water level. So I think it's not just, we're gonna plan together. Need to consider, are you looking at drought because the groundwater will draw over Andy's well right now are 10 feet below ground at at mud. Um, city well, the same thing. And so are you putting a drought plan together, looking at, because you're concerned about groundwater? Or are you putting a drought plan together because you're concerned about surface water and surface appearances? And certainly what Mr. Palmer alluded to on how the fort is operating, the spring and the pool, et cetera. I mean, I think there's some there's some things that you can't prove. There's some efficiencies that can be approved in that area, especially for the flow in Lost Morris Creek. For those of us that have been watching that USPS game for 12 or 13 years, we all know that that gate is not always accurate. And the USG from command will do some things, they'll change, do some forbidden things. Um, but the silver lining for this district right now in Kane County is that you've got water in the ground. May not be a lot of water on the surface, but you've got water in the ground. Uh, you have my time, so I have.
Yes, Jim. Water, this state Palmer, water in the ground is great. But if there's not enough water in the ground in Mud Creek, you said there's water in Mud Creek. I don't know. I drive by there every day. There's no water in Mud Creek. What are you, what are you talking about?
Uh, I've got instruments at the headwaters of, of, uh, uh, Mud Creek up in, this is a little market, do this property. We monitor that in real time. And right now, there's five feet of water in the head. In the head, in that spring basin, and it's included, um, is one of our monitoring locations. Um, unfortunately, that's about two miles up. And so by the time the water goes down and chokes back into the ground, before it gets to Highway 90 on that pumping driveway where you drive by.
Well, maybe, you know, maybe.
And you look off to the right, you're not gonna see any on the surface. If you drive up to that, to where it's similar to Lost Morris. There's water, there's, there's water that's been, uh, in the spring basin where it's pouring up out of the ground. Now in Lost Morris, it's, you go down 50 feet and there's something there. In Mud Springs, it's a little bit further. You go down about a quarter mile, there's no water in the spring.
All right, yeah, well, that's cool. I mean, that's, that's better than nothing, but I'm, you know, all the landowners that used to have it, you know, beyond where there's five feet are probably, you know, not happy that it's just dry, zero.
And Mr. Palmer, in all due respect, you're exactly right, but it's not, it's, no one's pumping in that area. It's a pain to draw out that creek. There's not, there's not a lot of water in that area. There's not there's no agriculture, there's no production wells, there's no livestock. Use of, of well need that area.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Yeah, I understand. So whatever, Mud Creek, Pinto Creek. They're all separate. I understand that, but the point that, you know, water in the ground is not the, the whole picture. We're not here just for one thing. We're not here just to manage the water in the ground. We're here to manage the entire water picture. And part of that water picture, a pretty big part of it is pretty bleak and you, you know, you could have your opinion on that. But not having Pinto Creek at all for the last five years, which this board hasn't really talked about at all. Pinto Creek's been dry. You could tell us, how long's Pinto Creek's been dry?
Well, my place has been dry three years, not five.
And so we are looking at ground, a great water in the ground.
Not five, yeah, three.
Groundwater coming out of stream flow. But we are. And so looking at, looking at that, we've been in extreme drought conditions. Uh, and you know, I put some ground, ground, some drought, some, some, um, normal, normal deviations. They can go back to the 1500s and some of that.
Yeah.
The last five years extremely dry. And so it would be expected that the surface expressions of, of stream flow are gonna be low. We're gonna see that on the surface, be perfectly dry.
Yeah, fine, but we need a hydrologist to do more about why, because what you're saying is what a consideration, but you're not a hydrologist. Anyway.
I make, I make motion with adjournment.
I'm taking that motion.
Discussion or vote?
On the agenda? Well, not timeout, but I have a comment on that motion. Usually, and Janelle, you can help us out on here, and I just looked at the meeting minutes and I could look at a lot more from before, but there's usually an item on the agenda. Discussion, fu- future agenda items. It's just not there. Do we want to just skip future agenda items? Well, it's just not there. It should be there.
Oh, we had a discussion about this really at the very first meeting or the second one. You, you can put anything on the agenda anytime during the month. All you get to do is call down here.
I understand that, but, but on each month.
If you want that on the agenda, we'll get that on next month's agenda. It just got missed.
I failed to put it on there. We switched the thing around and I, I just noticed.
Does anybody have any you know, inputs for what first agenda items to be tonight? Like, we should discuss it at every meeting. And Bonnie, thanks for, you know, bringing that up. It should be on this proposed future agenda items. I don't know.
We, we've stopped our process. Do you have something?
Yeah, I'd like to get somebody from the city here to discuss their use and their numbers and how they manage their water. I know they're exempt, but they've never really weighed into the deal. They're a pretty big.
You just volunteered. You get to do it.
Okay, I'll.
All those in favor of the journey, raise your right hand. All those opposed. Please, Jerry.
I'll abstain from that last adjournment. I'll raise my hand.